I could have everybody get ready, we're gonna start in a minute.
It was, it was just, it wasn't good.
See Mike, I put that up so you can read.
So that was standard practice?
Now we're ready to go here.
Now, now pretty much.
Well, Mrs. Brown started. Councilor Brown.
You want me to know when you're ready?
Recording, oh, it's a little early.
Okay, and I'm gonna have you give me the.
Let you know.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the town council regular meeting on March third, twenty twenty five. Wendy, could you please call?
Counselor, I will, thank you. Counselor Hopper.
Here.
Counselor Gardner.
Present.
Counselor Nellens.
Present.
Counselor Peterson.
Here.
Counselor Shinkin.
Here. I'd like everybody to stand for a moment of silence, and this is honor of Officer Ryan Perez. I have a little something to say. Officer Ryan Perez was born a natural leader and knew from a young age that his calling was to protect and serve the public. He started his career with Dalton Illinois Police Department where he distinguished himself as a stellar officer. From there, Officer Perez worked for the Oak Forest Illinois Police Department before making a move to Indiana. Officer Perez joined the Munster Police Department on October fourteenth, twenty twenty four, so he could, in his own words, be an officer again. Immediately upon joining the Munster Police Department, Officer Perez's experience and leadership were quickly recognized by his superiors. His peers were fast to gravitate to him due to his confidence and sense of humor. Ryan had a knack for being able to make people laugh even in stressful situations and excluded confidence when dealing with any situations. On Tuesday morning, February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, shortly after one A M, Officer Perez was involved in a traffic accident with a semi tractor trailer. As a result of this collision, Officer Perez passed away on the scene. His death has dealt a significant blow to the law enforcement community at the town of Munster. He will greatly be missed by his brothers and sisters in the police department. Please join me in a moment of silence to remember Officer Ryan Perez, and please continue to keep this white man lit in your thoughts and prayers. And that is it. He was, he was buried today.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Please have your phones on silence. And with that, we're gonna start the public hearing. All public comment is limited to two minutes with a total of twenty minutes allotted for public comments speaking. All speakers must sign the public speaker sign-in form prior to speaking. Please keep all comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, council may allow public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but not required to do so. All rules for public comment are posted outside the main meeting room, and with that, do I have anybody that's been up?
So, I think, the first thing, before you get to the open public comment.
Oh, public hearing.
Right. So, the public hearing on the additional appropriate.
Thank you.
Would be the first kind of order of the.
Okay, so first order of business is public hearing for ordinance nineteen seventy eight, and that is the second reading for.
The second reading for additional appropriations to get first reading at your last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
This is for six different funds, L I T Economic Development, Local Road and Street, CARPA, Motor Vehicle Highway, Sewer Maintenance, and Water Cash Operating. The procedure calls for a public hearing, and then later on you'll be asked to adopt the order.
Okay, and with that being heard, do I have anybody coming up there for public hearing for ordinance nineteen seventy eight? Going once, going twice, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and now I'm gonna start, or the, yeah, public hearing for nineteen seventy eight. And now I will start the public hearing for comments, public comments. With that being said.
Hello, hello all.
How you doing?
Doing well. John Castro, ninety-four ten White Oak Avenue, but I'm actually here on behalf of the school town of Munster Board of School Trustees. On February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, the school town of Munster Board Trustees approved a two-year contract to provide I T services to the school, to, to the town of Munster. This agreement is the result of months of research and planning by our Director of Computer Systems, Mr. Yark Posel, and interim town manager Patricia Abbott, along with our attorneys Angela Jones and David Westling. We sincerely appreciate their efforts on behalf of both governing bodies. Our board held a work session on January twenty seventh to review the contract and explore how this partnership will create a mutually beneficial relationship for both the town and the school district. As you vote tonight on the I T contract, we want you to know that we believe this collaboration is essential to strengthening our community. We are pleased to support the town's I T needs and remain committed to what is best for Munster. Very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanna thank you very much, and thank you for your ongoing partnership with the town of Munster. We always need strong schools, and you guys are doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Anybody else for public comment?
Evening, Tom Jurich, eighteen thirty-nine Magdalio. Looking at the news you can use today, and it's a great organ to send out, by the way, there's a lot of good information in there, but the front page made, really made me think. Talking about the streets that are gonna be done in this next year, which is great, I'd like to see a lot more of them, and also about strategic planning. I would really like to see strategic planning focus primarily, heavily, on infrastructure. Anyone who is in, lives, or spends time in the area of town north of forty-fifth street can tell you some of the problems. Three years ago, a street in front of my house, we done water main, that's great. But the adjacent street wasn't done. We've had two breaks, water main breaks in the last year. One was about two weeks ago, the crew came out in the middle of the night, did a great job. They worked hard, got it done. But it's happening too much. This I experienced, and I know it's happening in other parts of town. So again, I'm, I'm all for things that are aesthetically pleasing and the, uh, needing to develop people in businesses in town. But let's keep what we have in Munster really viable, our schools, our infrastructure, let's make this a place where everyone wants to come to. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, and we, that's what we're gonna be looking into, and once we get all the materials, we are gonna have the public involved in this, so I would like you to be there as well, but infrastructure is kinda number one. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Going once, going twice, I'm closing public comment, consent agenda. Mr. President, I would make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented in the back four packet. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda? Without doubt, Wendy, could you please call the vote?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes. Now, we're gonna go into old business, and that is ordinance nineteen seventy eight that we have second public hearing.
Next, the public hearing, the next and last step for council is the.
Do I have a motion to accept ordinance nineteen seventy eight?
I will make a motion that we approve ordinance nineteen seventy eight as amended, as presented tonight in its first pack.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any discussion on it? That being said, Wendy, would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes. For new business, we have the I T service agreement.
And as Mr. Castro talked about during the open to the public, this is something that has been, uh, a year in the making. Um, it will provide I T services to the town. Uh, the cost to the town will be, not what we were paying already, but we expect much better, uh, improved service level. Um, we are looking forward to working together with the school town on this, and I also would like to thank the school board for the, for allowing their staff to work with us so much over the past year to come to this point. Um, I think this would bring a really good thing for the town and the store.
With that being said, could I have a motion to accept the I T service agreement?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement for I T services with the school town of Munster.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? I, I guess my only question is, um, and again, I think this is a great, uh, great agreement, great, uh, way to work together with the school town. Uh, the hours of operation for the school town, are they just listed in there mainly just to give us a framework, uh, but if there's emergencies before or after those hours, we'll still have contact with them?
I, I think it depends on the type of emergency, and there was a lot of conversation around that. Uh, but now we don't have twenty-four seven calling, support with our current provider, and the staff believes that we are, we, we're in a good position with that, and we aren't concerned about about those hours.
Okay.
We can make those work.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion? Wendy, would you like to call the vote?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes. Um, engagement letter.
As part of the annual financial report, uh, one of the newer requirements from the state is that we provide a listing of all tax abavements, both direct and indirect, and dollar amounts that the town has impacted on those. Um, the first year or two that this was in place, there was a grant that allowed a certain individual to be able to perform this work at the county, uh, and they were able to provide that list to us. That grant no longer exists, um, and so to get that work done, we need to hire someone to make those promises for us. This is the same individual had been doing, they've been doing it, uh, and so this is an engagement letter for that work to be done.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, by motion and roll call vote, approve the engagement letter with Development Economic Finance Consulting LLC dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Do we have a second? I'll second that motion. We have a motion, a second. We have any discussion? No discussion, Wendy, would you like to call the vote, please?
I will. Um, Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes, and next up is an engagement letter for the landfill assurance test.
This is an annual requirement, uh, as part of the ongoing maintenance of having a closed landfill with a financial report, uh, that determines that the documents that we have, the financial, where we follow to maintain the landfill. And we're asking for your support.
I need a motion to approve this.
By motion and roll call vote, approve the letter of engagement with Baker Tilly for the annual landfill assurance test in the amount of eight thousand one hundred dollars.
I'll se, I'll second that.
Any discussion? I, I guess my only question would be, or maybe a suggestion that we could contact our, uh, our lobbyists. Uh, I'm, I'm struck by the, the last sentence in the first paragraph, the provision in three twenty-nine eight I A C, which is the Indiana code, applies to municipality as well, even though the same risks are not involved. Have we talked to Barnes and Dernberg anymore, or if it's Baker Tilly that can, a-again, it's eight thousand dollar payment that we're paying here that is really kind of seems like it's not worth, you know, the risks aren't there for the, for the state or for the, the, the people that, what we're still have to pay, pay for, had unfunded man these penalties.
I will put it on the list of things to discuss with Baker Tilly for lobbying.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Westling, do you have anything to comment?
I just feel all right now.
Yeah, exactly.
It'd be a Barney Barber.
Mm-hmm. Okay, okay. Any other discussion? No further discussion, Wendy, could you please call the vote?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes, next up, the engagement letter for revenue bonds.
So council has, um, has a desire, as this staff, we can do a lot of work with water infrastructure. And our current director of operations has identified about fourteen million dollars worth of work that that you would like to see us get done over the next three to five years. There's a variety of ways that we could go about paying for that work. Uh, Baker Tilly is asking to have them be engaged to help identify for the different projects, what's the best approach? Um, is there a state revolving fund dollars, are there grant dollars, uh, which thing should go in a revenue bond? That's what this engagement letter would do, they would perform that work, they would also perform the work for the revenue bond, uh, because we believe that at least some of that work will have to go down that road. So we're asking for support for that.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Well, that'll be in discussion after we make a motion to approve this.
Well, this is, this follows up on her comments that she just gave us. This habit, one of the things that emerged, and we were discussing water and sewer rate increases, was that Baker Tilly couldn't clearly identify the source of the numbers that they were projecting for water rates and sewer ri, for long-term infrastructure planning, for water rates, sewer rates. Um, I know they're the go-to entity here in the state of Indiana, but I think at some point, there's gonna be some questions directed to Baker Tilly, asking them to be able to offer justification. And they weren't able to do that during those conversations. Could we have some assurances that this next time around, they're gonna be better prepared when we have those conversations?
I think if, if I'm remembering the matter correctly, the issue with how much is needed in capital improvements wasn't so much a Baker Tilly coming up with the number as staff needing to identify. And in the packet this evening is the listing of the, it's thirteen point four, I think, million dollars worth of work. That list was prepared by staff with estimates of the, these are ballpark estimates of what the various projects would cost in conjunction with conversations with our engineer S E H to come up with that. So that list is being presented to Baker Tilly for them to make those determinations as far as which is the best, the funding route.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I would like a motion that we approve the letter of engagement with Baker Tilly for water revenue bonds. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Do we have any further discussion on this? Uh, again, just a very minor, uh, topic. Um, I do see one of the potential projects is Holman Avenue, uh, and I would, um, and I know it just says consider tearing out the center island, I would, uh, make sure that we, we do our due diligence with that, I know, um, I don't think we've had any issues with this center island with safety and the traffic moving. Uh, I would also think that that, uh, center island does allow some drainage in there, also helps with their drainage on the north end of town, so again, I know this is not, at that point, it's just a, a proposed project, but I would be very cautious to, uh, uh, consider that tearing out the island, I'd like to see those islands stayed and moved. Any other further discussion? Mr. Nellens.
Mr. President, I'd also share the comments from, uh, Councilman Gardner with respect to the Holman Avenue. I think that, uh, grass median adds a lot of, uh, of, um, historic look and with the lights and things down there, so I would like to see that stay.
I think.
I know it presents some problems, we have the same thing on Fisher with green belts in the middle, but I think it adds to the neighborhoods and quality alike.
Mr. Governor, the, the only other thing I'd like to say is I do appreciate the, the public works staff really giving on this and really looking at of the needs that we do have. Uh, as was mentioned, public input, uh, infrastructure is important, and I think this is one of our ways that we can really address this, and I know it's been talked about for some years, but I certainly appreciate, uh, public works really jumping on this and getting some plans put together for it. Any further discussion? That being said, Wendy, could you please call the vote?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes. Um, variance request.
So the town has been, um, awarded funds through N R C to do, to rework most of Main Street. Um, our engineer that's handling that is D L C, uh, and they have been working with staff on previous components for the project area. Town has, uh, stormwater technical standards. This is different than the town code, the town, uh, design codes for developments, that and everything. This is specific to stormwater. They've come across four different issues where they're looking to have, uh, approval to have a, a variance from what those technical, what the technical requirements are, and they have outlined what they are and how they are, um, they, they've outlined the reasons why. I believe there's representative here from D L C, if there are technical questions that you'd like to ask, I'm not a hydraulic engineer, so I'm not well-versed in in it, but I'm sure he can answer.
And he was at our agenda meeting to answer all our questions.
Yep.
And this'll save us about how much?
Uh, between one and two million dollars.
That's why I'm scared.
Yes.
Okay, with that being said, I need a motion to approve this request.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the requested design variances from the town of Munster Stormwater Technical Standards Manual, January twenty twenty-three version for the Main Street project.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second, do we have any just further discussion? My comment with this is, even though this is a waiver, the, actually the stormwater, it's been, as, as the engineers have been looking at this, is going to be an improved because of the relief, at least the stormwater is gonna be done differently, so, so again, um, my concern was waiver means for drainage, where in fact, this is actually going, the, the construction in the, uh, will improve the drainage, uh, with what's going on down in Main Street when this construction does happen.
When it's done.
Very good, thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, I see we've got the D L Z representative. Sir, could you stand, please? I'm sorry, what is your name?
Uh, Tony Kane.
Hi, Mr. Kane, thanks for coming. Uh, question for you. Um, I know there's been substantial change in stormwater regulations over the last fifteen to twenty years. If this were fifteen or twenty years ago, would we even need this variance under the standards, do you think?
Uh, no.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Wendy, could you please call the vote?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes. Next up is Public Works, uh, Lake Pond Ditch Maintenance.
This is an annual, uh, contract that we enter into with the aquatic control. They handle the lake pond ditches, um, maintains the algae, keep that under control, that type of thing. Contract runs through April through October, I think it is.
And those are all the ponds in our retention.
This is different than the pond.
Okay.
This is maintaining the, the water that's in there. There'll be a different contract that you'll see in the fall where they remove the ponds, maintain the.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion for the Lake Pond Ditch Maintenance Program?
I'll make that motion, by motion and, and, uh, roll call vote, approve the aquatic contract proposed uh, forty four one zero three eight one dated February eleventh for, for twenty twenty-five custom vegetation management program in the amount of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars.
I have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second that motion. Um, do we have a discussion on this?
I'd like to comment that over the years, we've had a number of different vendors. Uh, we started out with aquatic control, then we had some other vendors, and quite honestly, we had nothing but complaints and calls with the other vendors, and the residents weren't happy, and the water didn't look good, and the fish said they wouldn't live with this anymore, so, uh, I just wanna point out that aquatic control does a very good job, and it's something that's in the, that, that you can see, it really shows if it's not done right.
Dave, did you put the fish in those ponds originally?
No, they came, uh, well, we had some that were put in, but they come in on the feet of the, of birds.
Do they taste better with aquatic services?
We don't allow fish out there.
Oh, come on.
They, they blow in the dark.
Um, any further discussion on this? Wendy, could you call the roll call vote for the fish, please?
Well, um, Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes, for the fish.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
For the fish, yes. Um, going forward, um, this is the cost for the forklift.
Uh, council approved the purchase of the forklift, and at the time, it was assumed that there would be two older forklifts that would be turned in, traded in at the same time. Since then, and before we received the new forklift, uh, Park Department has expressed an interest in purchasing one of the ones that was going to be traded in, and Public Works would like to keep the other. Uh, so in order to do that, we need council to authorize the spending of the additional funds, pay the full cost of the new forklift, but we're keeping the old one.
Thank you. Could I have a, please, could I please have a motion?
By motion and roll call vote, approve W A Jones quote to retrofit unit three three six for a total cost of sixty-five thousand, no, wrong one, wrong item.
Could I make a motion?
Sure.
Approve the purchase of a forklift model G P six, zero, or O, zero or O N for, from Boss Equipment for a purchase price of forty-seven thousand dollars.
Um, yeah, we have a motion, Dave, you wanna second that?
I'll second that motion, I'm sorry.
Do we have discussion? No, this is an easy one, for the forklift.
Okay, Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes, now Dave, this is gonna be yours for the dump trucking.
Okay, yeah.
Well, that's the first.
Uh, so the town has a tandem axle dump truck that currently has an anti-icing unit on it. Uh, that particular method is, has not proven to be used as often as we had hoped. So staff would like to have it retrofitted to be more like the other units that we have in the park system, since there's no effort that we that we currently make.
Okay, thank you. Dave, could I have a motion?
All right, by motion and roll call vote, approve W A Jones quotes a retrofit unit three three six for a total cost of sixty-five thousand ninety-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
We have a motion, could I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion on this? No.
I was gonna say, I think, you know, Public Works does a great job, and they do need to switch their equipment around from time to time, and we're trying to utilize as much equipment as possible, and again, the proof is with the way they do the roads, and everybody comments that they know when they're in Munster by the roads. So I, oh, I really support this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? That being said, Wendy, please call the vote.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes. Next up is a proposal for the L E D streetlights.
This is to have the streetlights along Canada Avenue, a hundred and seventeen of them, switched over to L E D. Uh, staff got quotes from two different places, this was the best one. Uh, we're also looking to give rebates, Snipsco offers some rebates on them, we're gonna try to get those. Uh, and we expect to have, when we do Snipsco bill, the people have the more efficient lights.
May I have a? Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve Midwestern Electric to retrofit a hundred and seventeen streetlight fixtures on Calumet Avenue to LED for a total cost of eighty thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? That being said, Wendy, could you please call the vote?
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Nellens?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin?
Yes, and last up is disposal of equipment.
Police Department has a listed equipment that they no longer use, they're asking that if they declared surplus, surplus so that they can dispose it.
May I have a motion, please?
By motion and roll call vote, declare the, uh, item surplus authorized by the, authorized police department to destroy listed property and remove same from our current inventory.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we need discussion on this? No discussion, Wendy, could you please call the vote?
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Nellens?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Shinkin?
Yes, um, that ends new business, we're gonna start with reports, uh, the signal, signal maintenance S E H report.
So back in October of twenty twenty-four, council authorized S E H to do a study of Calumet Avenue, the signals at each intersection from River Drive through Main Street. They completed that work, they made a presentation to council at their last agenda review. They found a number of areas where things can be improved, so they're going to be working with, uh, with the most likely Midwestern to try to find, uh, you know, to identify the, the cost for them to retime all of those signals, get things in, get things synchronized.
Thank you, and Bob, when you think we're gonna start on that and get?
I spoke with Midwestern, um, we're gonna have S E H forward all their signal times, so we can expedite that process.
Bless you.
Thank you. And get that actually going, probably, I would say within the next couple weeks.
Nice, thank you very much, appreciate it. Any else?
Mr. President, I wanted to just comment that, that was pointed out, uh, by S E H that they felt there were six fixtures, or six intersections in which the lights were not in sync with the other ones, and they were sort of doing their own thing.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other reports?
We do, I was, my way to the portfolio, thank you.
We're gonna close reports, let's go to portfolio reports.
Just me, okay. Um, one is I wanted to share from a recent NERC meeting, um, as I've shared before from NERC. Uh, they are working on a flex road on eighty ninety-four, and we can expect in the summer of twenty twenty-five to see a fiber optic lane, uh, line, uh, laid down. Um, the goal there is to do increased traffic management, which will include variable speed limits, dynamic, dynamic shoulder lanes. And another big project they have is, um, Broadway and the I sixty-five, they're gonna work on improving that interchange. Also, the, they announced that the C C M G grant will be, uh, awarded, we should know this week who's getting what, so that's something to look forward to. And then I'm going to shift hats to the Munster Chamber of Commerce, I just learned that, um, at their Thursday, May eighth luncheon, our governor will be the featured speaker, so Governor Brown will be there.
Okay, so it's gonna be a biggie.
It will be a good one.
So I do have a report with the, uh, Board of Safety, and, uh, one positive with hiring some more, um, officers is that traffic tickets went up fifty percent from last year to this year, so they are out there, they are ticketing, so I advise everybody state speed limit, 'cause they're not getting warnings anymore. The, you have a thing?
On behalf of the park board, I would like to, um, uh, again, invite everybody on March seventeenth, Monday, March seventeenth. Uh, the new clubhouse will be dedicated and grand opening of the new clubhouse will take place, uh, Monday, March seventeenth at two P M.
Any other reports? Announcements, all town council meetings will begin at six thirty unless otherwise noted, our next meeting will be Saint Patty's, our seventeenth. Um, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
Second? I'll second that one, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna close that, and Mr. Castro, this one should be a short one.
Hopefully so, they're usually pretty long.
Yeah, this was a long one today.
And the last redevelopment was, uh, it was quite as long as normal.
Love to prove it all. Yeah, exactly. I am now gonna start the, uh, regular meeting of the redevelopment commissions. Uh, Wendy, could you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hopper?
Here.
Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
Commissioner Nellens?
Present.
Commissioner Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Shinkin?
Here.
And our school board liaison, Mr. John Castro?
Present.
Nice to see you, sir.
Thank you. We're gonna start this off with public comment, this has to do with redevelopment commission only. All public comment is limited to two minutes with a total of twenty minutes allotted for the public comment section. All speakers must sign, the public speaker sign informed prior to speaking, please be all comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issue. At their discretion, council may allow public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but not required to do so. All rules for public comments are posted outside main meeting room, and with that, do I have anybody coming up for the redevelopment commission for public comment? Going once, going twice, we're closing public comment, consent agenda, may I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion, do we have a second? I'll, I'll second that motion. Any discussion? No discussion, Wendy, could you please call the vote?
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shinkin?
Yes, we have no old business, no new business, we do have a report for our twenty twenty-four annual report of the Development Commission.
This is the annual report in twenty twenty-four, uh, that the, uh, treasurer is required to present to the commission.
Okay, um, the president of Munster Town Council Redevelopment Com- Commission accepts and will be placing these on file. Any announcements? Adjournment, may I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second.
All those favored?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for attending. We now have a meeting.
Oh, yeah. Do we have students tonight?
If there are any students that need the pictures taken, uh, to show that you're at the meeting, just come up here right afterwards and we'll, uh, just stand in front of the meeting. Gaius? Pony. Always correct. Whatever I say, whatever I say, you're welcome.
See you guys.
Very good, we'll see you. Thanks, Tony.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Tony.
One is going to, for, um,
Yeah, Lana, come up here. And we'll stand here, uh,
You need somebody to take the shit.
God, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, okay, sounds good.
Thank you. For you guys.
Thank you. All right, you're welcome. We don't like, just your mind. Every fish thousand.
Not yet.
I heard, I was probably told. Cause my grandson can have baseball. And they, but they, this is, they brought someone else. Harms ran and. Or he brought somebody.